There's an addition to this and then we had it originally open lease space that we were just gonna leave wide open, but we do have a, already have a tenant for that facility with the Milton-Si State University and Aerospace Department and using that space for a large classroom office in a senior area. So part of that construction, we're taking advantage of while we have construction going on, having them come in. That space is around 2,080 square feet, really a size not too different than this room here. Also with the work that we've been going over with staff to review this design-build contract, we've been also spending a great deal of time looking over what our responsibilities, the city's responsibility is with building this building and have those costs intact too and have that as part of our budget and are within budget at this time. So if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Gurkey?
Just a clarification. The agreement that you, that's before you would be, is, has not been signed off on yet by the design-build team because their, the principal has been under the weather. So it would be subject, your approval would be subject to final legal review, but I don't think those changes would be significant or substantively change the nature of the relationship.
Can we get a motion?
Show move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's right. All right, thank you, Mr. Gurkey.
Thank you.
Mr. Tannen, detailed bond resolution and loan agreement.
You recall, last meeting, we did, go ahead, go ahead, Aaron. We did pass the initial bond resolution and this is the detailed bond resolution, the next step in our process. Ms. Tucker, can you take it from here?
That's pretty much what I was gonna say. You should all have the revised SunTrust loan terms at your desk. Nothing significant was changed from what you received earlier in the week along with the approved projects that you have previously approved. And you'll also recall at our December workshop meeting, we discussed these projects and discussed issuing an RFP versus a bank loan and, I mean, the RFP for a bank loan versus going to traditional bond market. Our financial advisor came along, securities issued the RFP and they received and evaluated the responses. We received nine responses with SunTrust offering the most advantageous option with a 15-year fixed rate with 2.84% interest. This rate was very comparable to where the market has been over the last few weeks that we've gone public and the cost of issuance for this loan is much lower at $150,000 versus, we spent nearly $300,000 with the 2018 bond and around $423,000 for the 2016 bond. So we recommend council approve this resolution which authorizes the city to issue the $58 million loan to SunTrust. And we've got a couple of folks from, couple of securities here if y'all have any questions.
Aaron, this is different than we've done in the past, right? Using SunTrust rather than, can you explain to us a summary of the difference?
Well, going with the RFP for a bank loan versus going to the market is a little bit outside of what we've normally done. We did issue an RFP for a refunding several years ago. So we have done it before, just in a kind of different capacity. So this is the first, I guess, initial loan we've done through this process. We received several responses and ranging from fixed rate to variable rate with line of credit drawdowns, different options like that. I believe that the summaries were in your packet of information as well, but the SunTrust with the 2.84% 15-year was determined to be the best, the best option for the city.
And are we certain that it's gonna be a better option than going to the market, just like we have always done?
But we felt like it was pretty good, it was a very good rate coming out of bank loan. We saved substantial amount of issuances fees. Our issuance fees are about $150 normally on a bond issuance. It could be as much as $500,000 or $500,000. So that alone is pretty good. There are some advantages to using the bank loans as opposed to going into the market. The structure is very comparable. It's a 15-year structure. We do have a 10-year period of time before we could, we could pay it off, just like we would have with a municipal bond. But it does offer us a few different advantages and it establishes a relationship, a pretty strong relationship with a bank for future, I mean, or we may not want to go to the market for various reasons. So with that, I mean, all things considered, we felt like the, with the rate, the way it is right now with the bond market and how long it would take us to the bond market and the uncertainty in the market, that this, this was the best, best way to go and we can close on this pretty quickly.
What are the risks?
The risks are no different than if we'd gone to the bond market. They're, I mean, it's, there's no, there's no additional risk with, with this. Same, same amount of funding.
I mean, what happens if something happens to SunTrust? I mean, they gotta call the loan, we gotta pay it off?
Oh, no. I mean, it, it, there's no provision in the loan agreements would allow them to, to call the loan under those circumstances. I mean, it would be, it would be a workout like it would be another bank. I mean, they've just, they've just announced that they're merging with BBNT.
BBNT.
And so it would be an even bigger bank. So at some point you get to the too big to fail type situation where the government comes in and makes the bank hold it. They won't, they won't, they don't have the ability to call the loan. I mean, the worst thing that could happen, I suppose, if the bank did fail the loan would be marketable. They could actually sell the note to another entity, but there's no call provision for, for a bank failure. There are provisions in there for default, just like there would be in your bond provision anyway. So the structure is, is pretty comparable.
One of the risks going to the market would be whatever day that we went to the market, it was not a good day and we could end up with a rate higher than what SunTrust had. Our advisors indicated that this was a very aggressive bid from a bank and that they obviously were interested in partnering with the city.
Because we're at 2.84, right?
Yeah, our last, what was our last issuance, yeah?
That's the 2018.
But 2.74 or 2.79, something like that.
Something like that.
It wasn't a significant difference.
He said it's about right.
Yeah, it's about right.
And that was going through the market.
Any other questions?
I'm not sure I understand exactly the difference. I mean, I think, I think I understand what's going on, but I guess I just wanna make sure that, you know, if we're doing something the first time ever, that, you know, there's a reason we've done things the way we've done them probably all these times.
Well, you know, in a sense, it's the first time ever for an initial loan and doing it through the RFP process. But we've gotten these bank loans through the Tennessee Municipal Bond Pool before and they go to the bank and they work out the details and then they loan the money to us. In this case, we went through our advisor. We're the ones who solicited requests from banks and then we chose the best, you know, the best response for us. The, the bank pool actually, we did ask them to participate. Their, their, their terms and rates were not as favorable. They did not participate in the RFP, but they did, they did send us, you know, some information if we went that direction. So this SunTrust agreement is even better than that. We could've gotten through the pool. But we did the work in-house versus having them do it for us. We're still going through a public building authority for the state of Tennessee that's required. So if you look at your agreement, we're partnering with the severe county PBA. You have to go through one. And so it's, it's been very smooth. The process has been very smooth. Just because we've not done it for an initial loan, the fact we did it through our old advisor for refunding, it's not really new to us. It's just we've not done an initial loan on our own before. We've always gone through the bank pool before.
In fact, our last payoff was a bank loan with First Tennessee. So when we refunded, we paid off a bank loan that we have with First Tennessee.
That was our 2010 loan.
We're not re, I mean, the primary difference is the source of funds. Market having several likely institutional investors pick up your bond.
Yeah.
It's, you know, one investor and they could remarket it for all we know, but.
I mean, has somebody looked at meetings to say?
Sure.
Yeah, this makes sense or?
Yeah, yeah, we've done that. Well, I say we've done that. Carmelins, who's very experienced at that, has done that and, you know, did the comparisons and there are, there are some differences on, on comparisons and structure and cash flow and paying out the bonds as, as opposed to this. This one seemed to be advantageous to where we're at with our budget. And, you know, it made sense. It's the same term. You know, there, over the 15-year period, there'd be some savings with municipal bond weight, the way it's structured overall. But, you know, the structure of this allows us to work through our budget issues. At the end of the day, it's, you know, it's $58 million in U.S. currency it will work at and the bond agreement, the, the agreements that we'll have with the, with the lender will be carefully vetted through standard lending agreements and we won't do anything tricky there. We all standard, standard language.
Okay. No kind of balloons that we have to worry about what the rate's gonna be someday?
We wouldn't do that. We're just, we're not gonna do that.
There were some bids that we had that had variable rates and things like that. This is not a variable.
Have a motion? Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Those are our two actual items.
We have a presentation at the Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to, for you to talk. I've got a few things going on. First of all, I wanted to introduce our new Senior VP for Economic Development, Patrick K. Mack. He comes from us, from the Williamson County Chamber and has been living in Murfreesboro and been commuting over there. So now he's glad he didn't have to commute. We're glad to have him. So we're pleased you're here. So anything you need from me or him, please let us know. Also in the back, we have Christina Schreagland, who's our new Director of Communications for the Chamber and then Shannon Miller is our tourism department. I wish she was here to support us, but she's here to get her leadership rather credit. So glad to have her here. I just wanna spend just a few minutes today, just kinda talking about some of the, some of the things that, that we have going on in the Chamber and to also thank you for your partnership in terms of being an investor in what we're doing. How do you put the next slide?
Down there.
So your investment in prosperity. So what we're looking at are a few things. One, we have the area and responsibility for tourism for the county. We also have destination relevant and we also have the economic development side of what we're trying to do as moving our county forward. So if you look at some of the things that we're doing in tourism, one, put together just a few slides for you to talk about. Obviously, we manage a portion that you allow us of the hotel, motel tax. So we did receive some from, from you guys, also the county. We also receive monies from the town of Smyrna and also the city of Laverne and we reinvest those dollars into activities that will hopefully and most likely lead into tourism expenditures for, for our cities and our counties. As reported by the state of Tennessee, I'm sorry, back, back what, some of the, some of the public areas we try to do is our sports tournaments and teams. Sports has been a very key thing in trying to raise the level of our sports, of our tourism dollars in the sports areas, meetings and conferences. We generally focus on those conferences who are gonna come in and have a minimum of a two-night stay here in Murfreesboro or in the county. And obviously with the advent of the M C Suites and Conference Center, that has really boosted our ability to recruit not only state, but regional and also some, some, some national conferences have come here for that. We also focus on overnight guests with drive markets within 175 miles plus the different flight markets from Chicago to Dallas. And now we, we're able to market ourselves. We're working on with the, the national folks. With BNA now has a direct flight to London. So we're now be able to get some folks that are gonna be coming over from overseas to come here to join, not only the national area, but the things that we have to do here in our own county and in Murfreesboro in particular. So last year, 2017, the state numbers were published. We generated 300, our county generated $351 million in direct tourism expenditures for our county. That represented a generation of about 2,790 jobs that are in the tourism or hospitality related field, which produced a payroll of about 65, almost $66 million in travel related payroll. So you can see definitely tourism has that. In addition, which is what's important in terms of what we're trying to do here locally, it created $29 million in state and local tax revenue. So that's, that money is going directly back into the community for, for that. So we talked about tourism, talked about the benefits make sense upon there. So if, as a result, the taxes generated by tourism activity in, in just our county alone, each household pays $72.90 less in local taxes than they would if we had no tourism expenditure. Each household will also pay, pays $209.44 less in state taxes. And so if we did not have state, wouldn't have tourism in our state and our county, each, each resident in Rutherford County would be looking at, or each household, I should say, would be paying $280,000 more in additional state taxes there. So you can see how just important tourism activity is to not only our county, but the entire state. One of the things that we have initiated that's fairly new is our new tourist, cultural tourism and heritage initiative where we're looking really at our local assets. And the definition of cultural heritage tourism, which I can barely say, is traveling to experience the place, traveling to experience the places, artifacts and activities that represent the stories and the people, the past and present. This includes visitation of our cultural, historic and natural resources. And that's the definition by, that's defined by the National Historic Preservation. A lot of our local partners that we're gathering and we're having conversations with them, how we can work more collaboratively, collaboratively from that standpoint. And that, that includes folks like Uncle Dave Megan Days, Stones River Battlefield, Sam Davisone, Uncle's Mansion and on and on. I think the, the newest thing that will be coming online that you've all addressed and approved in the, in the past six months or so was the Souths Reg. Field Day, which will be coming online hopefully about a year, year and a half, which we believe as we, we talk to you when we're joining to, within the coming years, that it will be a significant generator of new tourism coming into Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. We talked about sports. I mentioned it earlier. Sports is a huge part of our portfolio. If you look at just the two things that we're doing right now, the TWSSAA, all their activities that they have here in Rutherford County that generates $9 million annual economic impact. And so our partnership with the TWSSAA is very valuable. Working just recently with the Parks and Rec Department as well as the other city officials here, you know, the TSSA is going to be coming here to Murfreesboro with this new soccer complex, which we believe will generate 20,000 more room nights and that'll start hopefully early in 2020. So Destination Rutherford, we, we talk about that a lot. This is a program that's now in its fourth generation of what we're trying to do. We really wanna address about three things. And the, and the tag, the tagline for that is create, advance and prosper. So under those three, three things that we wanna, we really, we, we try to focus on, number one is workforce development, new business recruitment and business retention and expansion. Those are the three pillars of foundation of what we're trying to do and take as it relates to Destination Rutherford. Workforce development is probably the number one challenge that we have in our community. We're hitting it head on. We have placed significant resources to, to really what we try to empower Murfreesboro, Rutherford County's current future workforce to become highly skilled and employable. So that's the biggest thing that we're trying to do there. As a result, attracts new businesses with a ready work pool of employees. And that's really what we're trying to do is get people up and running and the skills necessary for that. So we're actually starting right now in the eighth grade. We're exposing middle school students to career exploration. That is something that we have really done over the past several years and it's, it's getting them to start thinking about and interested before they enter high school into a different pathway. So what we're also doing, we can't have education without the employer side of, employer side of it. So we're engaging employers through the Career Pathways Program and they actually go into schools now and help us explain what it's like to work in a particular pathway. We also encourage work-based learning initiatives that translate into practical applications. And then finally, we work with public sector leadership councils to establish, establish these career pathways here for Rutherford County. So we've got really essentially five high-demand, high-wage sectors that we focus on that are really, we have developed five councils that are industry-led and these are not led by us from a staffing perspective. We help support that obviously. But you can see that the five councils there under, under the tagline of Rutherford Works. That is our workforce development branding there. Construction, we know there's a shortage of construction workers. We have several students who, who are not gonna go on to get, get a degree. And so we're trying to get them interested in the trades and it's really taken off. Healthcare, it's a growing sector obviously in our community, bringing great jobs and also a great quality of life and helping with the ability to use their services. So the Health Care Council is very, at, very active. Manufacturing Council is certainly some of our bread and butter in our community. Some of the higher wage jobs are in manufacturing and we're continuing to support that. Supply chain management is also another council. And then finally, even growing, more, more growing sector as we continue to develop in technology is our tech community council. There are more information technologies and the partnership that we have with them is, is growing. So if you look at some of the things that we're trying to do in workforce development and just the K through 12 programming, one, everybody who has a business or everybody deals with it, everybody likes to know that the person they're dealing with has good soft skills. And so one of the things that we introduced this year and had a big deal about it was took a county-wide approach to a program called the Amazing Shake Competition. And frankly, it's, it's taking fifth graders and teaching them, number one, how to shake hands and look people in the eye and talk, talk to them about the importance of being engaged when you're in conversation. Through this competition, which we had two winners go here and go on to Atlanta to that Amazing Shake Academy. They go through problem-solving opportunities. They actually simulate a customer service call that is going wrong and it's amazing what these kids can do and we're, we're pleased to do that. I mentioned earlier with the career exploration, again, introducing careers to young people who will be shortly getting out of school in the next several years after that to do that. We have eighth grade career fair. We've done that in every single school in Rutherford County to make sure that they understand what's going on and does relate to a potential career. We have different, a number of summer camps and also we have the Career Pathway Partnership. So looking at some employer engagement things that we're trying to do, there are meaningful teacher externship programs. This is actually, you typically think you'll get a student and be an intern in somewhere, but we're actually doing an externship where a company, I'm sorry, a teacher will actually go into the, into the workplace of a company and learn about what the things that their company is doing and what their, what some of their issues are and some of the opportunities. And that teacher then takes that back and goes back into the school from there. We also have, again, summer camps with that. And then also, I just mentioned, we do have high school opportunities, internships for students. We have found that somewhere between 75 and 8% of students who are getting out of high school have not had a job before. And so, you know, I think a lot of what happens is they get involved in sports or get involved doing things and just don't have the time. And so this is their purpose. And so we, we go through an interview process with them and actually the company will hire them based on their, on their merits. We wouldn't be successful as we are today in our county, in our city here if we didn't have the wonderful pro, post-secondary education institutions here. Of course, the MTSU is our biggest genre of workforce in the entire region as well as brought the entire state. The Tennessee College of Applied Technology is, is a strong asset for us for someone seeking a certificate in, in a particular industry or, or a, or a one-year degree. And then also with Motle, State Community College, they're a growing, a growing college here in our community in Smyrna and they look forward to continue that path. So I wanna talk about some of the successes. I mean, I think it's good to have, to brag about some of the wins we have. In 2018, we had $544 million in new capital investment come to our county, 1,187 new jobs. Since 2013, we've had 12,937 jobs and $2.3 billion in capital investment for, for our county and that, that says a lot. We're fourth in the state for retail sales of $8 billion. And again, I mentioned earlier, our target sectors are, are in the, in the area of office recruitment, advanced manufacturing, aviation as well as supply chain management. Some of the accolades that Murfreesboro has received, I think it's important to point that out, is number one in most affordable city in Tennessee, in the ability magazine, best suburb for millennials in Tennessee, number one in Niche Magazine, Central Magnet ranked top, top high school in the state of Tennessee. The MSA was ranked number three in the United States for job growth by Forbes for Tennessee, the highest retail, fourth highest retail sales in the state of Tennessee for Rutherford County, best real estate market in the nation, number six, and number nine for tourism-related expenditures. And then finally, fastest-growing city in the United States, number 13, pretty spot-walled out. So there's a lot to brag about, a lot to be proud of, what we're trying to do here in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. Murfreesboro remains attracted to many major companies. I just had a list of some of the office companies that we have here that are looking to be a great part of the fabric of our communities. Or State Farm is, is still a great company here in Rutherford County, in Murfreesboro in particular, with 1,650 jobs rising and continues to. CASI, which you were, we all partnered on from the city in, in terms of their new corporate headquarters, NHC, Swan Cosmex. McKesson Plasma Biologics, don't know if you maybe know about it, but Patrick and I went and visited with them. They actually have about, about 20,000 square feet of office space at the avenue in the back. They came in and they're doing some big things there. Innovate Medical and then most recently, I3 Verticals, which is the company we worked with, to their software development company who's now located at the Fountains and I think they have about 8,000 to 10,000 square feet. And I can, I can tell you just from, based on what I, I think I know, I think they're poised for growth and I think we're looking forward to more good things out of those guys. Just to kinda look at the, the last thing, and this is quote from Greg Daley, CEO and Chairman of I3 Verticals. He says, "Rutherford County is particularly attractive location for this important operations facility because it offers both experience and mature workforce and the ability to build our team locally over the long term and with qualified technology folk, technology-focused job seekers graduating from Milton-Si State University." That says a lot about our community and also about our university. And I, you know, I know we have limited time and I know there might be questions, but I'd be happy to talk about anything that you have in your mind. But again, always appreciate the partnership and I know we look forward to, anytime you want us to come back and give updates on either happenings that we have going on, we'd be happy to do so.
Paul, what can we do to, to do some things better as it relates to attracting, you know, some more corporate relocation, higher paying jobs, whatever you wanna call it? You know, CASI is really the only one I can point to since the last five and a half or six years since I've been on the council. And, you know, I think, I think, I think the council would all like to see that number be better.
Yeah, I agree.
What, what, what needs to happen, man? I mean, you know, this, that's all really information, but what we need to do to carry this thing forward?
There's a couple of opportunities. One, Greg and I had, had a meeting in front of that. We're gonna sit down with Scott and some other folks to really look at and possibly the engagement of a, of a brand in the firm to really help us rebrand, move Murfreesboro into what we are and what we wanna be. I think the, the greatest part is if we get some way down here, we can show them what we have. It's just a matter of getting to come past that Davidson County line when someone is looking around for those things. The other thing, the other opportunity that we wanna try to understand how we can better focus on is that more and more you're looking at companies who are gonna locate more where their workforce lives. And I think we are primed for that perfect opportunity there. So I think some, some, trying to find out the definition of how we do that, how we market that. And I think those types of things have come. In addition to that, and the mayor participated, through our relationships with companies like Site Selectors who do, do these things for us and it's actually helped companies pick locations. The Alliance Bernstein deal in Nashville, we had, Patrick had a relationship with the folks there that were able to get them to come down one day while they were in town and we showed them and they were like, you guys have a... guys have an amazing opportunity. But they wouldn't have known about it. So we've got to do a better job of getting folks here to understand what we have, the attributes. And then again, what I said earlier is really focus on that branding piece. What are we? And I think that's got to be, I think MTSU has got to be a huge part of that in terms of, because MTSU is the largest generation of workforce. And why wouldn't you want to come? Where folks are going to more likely live. And their stats have shown that, you know, MTSU students, when they graduate, about 80 or so percent live in the 120 miles per hour.
Are there some, you know, part of the answer for me is is going to be, seems to me like the collaboration with all the parties that are involved, you know, whether it be you guys and MTSU, us, you know, maybe others, you know, other municipalities here if we have to, and however that works. All we can speak for is us. But, you know, I mean, at some point or another, part of this stuff, just living here and doing what we do in city council, you know, is a part of this. I don't know if we want to really dive into it today, but it sounds, you know, it seems to me like there's going to have to be some difference in the way that we do things. And I don't mean the chamber or the council or the university, but maybe all three.
I agree.
I personally don't have, you know, I'm not a business development, you know, that's not what I do and understand real well. What I do know is as a city councilman, I'm willing to put, you know, I'm willing to devote some resources to that, put some work into it, whatever it, you know, to be to understand more and do that. But I don't even know what it is I want to, I don't even know what it is I can do. And, you know, I don't think anybody though wants to do it. If we're not willing to make some changes here, then MTSU might not be willing to make some changes there. Or MTSU is not willing to make some changes to, you know, improve maybe what their output is or whatever that, whatever the pros say we need to do.
Yep.
We need somebody to build us out a plan and say, look, here is a big picture plan. City council, you might have to, you know, here's some things you're going to have to make some tough decisions on. Here it is. Are you willing to do it or not?
Yep.
MTSU, here's some things, I mean, the chamber, here's, you know, I mean, we need some help with that. Okay?
We've got a good start. We've got a good start. And I think, I think the thing is, is, you know, we all live here and we see, you know, the opportunities we have here. But the but the people who don't live here, we need to figure out the best way for them to perceive how we are and what we are. And I think that is, and that needs to be in the hands of, or in the sights, so to speak, of people who make decisions on site location. Plain and simple. So when you have a project looking in the middle Tennessee area, we want you to, we want that that site consultant to, number one, put us in the mix. And number two, think about, well, this is a great place. And they can tell their client, your workforce lives here. So let's get them, help solve some of the traffic problems that Eddie and I've talked about in the past. So I think that's a great opportunity. And like I said, we're getting some good conversations with Greg and some others. And I think we're we're at a great starting point. And I look forward to reporting back some of the things that we're trying to do. And we'll be asking, you ask what you could do. I'll be hopefully telling you what, or suggesting what you can do in terms of helping out. But I think the future is still really bright for our county, our city, and Rutherford County.
Yeah, Paul, when we met with the Site Selector, she gave a lot of really good information. But she also talked about how that the relocation of companies has changed over really the last 10 years in that more companies are really stressing to work from home, you know, with different, different organizations. So she said that what they felt like is what you're going to see is those I-3 vertical companies that have, you know, 25 to 100 employees, those are really the ones that you're going to be focusing on. Because once you can get those 25 to 100 employees, then they grow from there. But, you know, the Amazon deals of 5,500 employees or 5,000 employees are just not out there very much. But, you know, that's what what I gather from meeting with them is getting those, I won't say small businesses, but really that 100 to 250 is the sweet spot.
Absolutely.
Paul, let me say thank you personally for the presentation. I thought it was very good. I always get asked the question, what's the Chamber of Commerce doing? And usually I struggle with my response. And of course, the way for me to communicate well with the public is for you to communicate well with us. And I think today's effort is much appreciated. The emphasis that we're putting on schools and our students and having them career ready, that's, there's, there's just nothing that could reward our community greater than having our students job ready when they come out the door at their university or their high school and be prepared. TCAT has no doubt changed our ability as far as the state's emphasis in putting that much money into 12 miles down the road, a facility that is second to none. I think if you're trying to study mechatronics, or electronics, or pneumatics, or any of the fields that they're training people in, I think they're putting out quality students that would be second to none. As far as workforce development, I think we're doing a phenomenal job. The, going back to kind of what Rick was talking about, I think where we're potentially, or I feel like we're coming up a little short, is our ability to attract white collar jobs. And I know, as Shane referred to, that's becoming more difficult every day because more of those jobs are being farmed down into their homes rather than having a huge corporate headquarters. The world has gotten smaller in a sense that you don't need to drive from Murfreesboro to Nashville to sit in an office to do the same thing you can do from your living room.
Right.
And that that all makes sense. The challenge is, is we still need those corporate headquarters here because you can look at I-24 and see that that's not the norm. There's still a lot of people that are getting up every day and going to Nashville. So our competition may not be landing the company out of California, but more so targeting some of the businesses that are in Nashville, primarily Tennessee State Government. If we could get some of those government jobs to consider branching off into Murfreesboro where they have their workforce is probably living in Murfreesboro already, it helps twofold. It helps our local economy, but it also helps us with our interstate system traffic problem.
Right.
And so I think there's somewhere in there that we need to be talking, and I know you're trying with capital connections, to communicate with our legislators and make sure that they understand that if there's an opportunity in Nashville where instead of expanding state government in Nashville, that it's no longer needed for their office to be located next to somebody else's office. With computers, you're just the same distance away from them in Murfreesboro as you are in Nashville. So having said all that, I think there's still a great deal of opportunities for us here. I appreciate you coming and speaking to us today. And truly do think that, you know, the future of Murfreesboro is bright and you're a part of it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Ronnie, any workout tips you need for me before I go?
No, I will, since you called on me, I'll ask questions. From an outbound calling perspective, we have target companies that we say, hey, we'd really like to have this company. And are we, what are we doing in that space?
We do. Patrick is on the road a good bit. As a matter of fact, what we do is take, I guess we used to call them team trips, but we take, or several folks, we'll get a partner with TBA or with the state of Tennessee, or even sometimes the Nashville Chamber. Where number one, a lot of our leads come through Site Selectors. I mean, there's a whole universe of people who represent companies. And it's a lot, and they usually have a lot of projects or have projects, especially in a positive economy. So that's where we get a lot of our leads from. And so when we talk to them, we sit down, have the opportunity to demonstrate to them what we have going for here. And then ultimately we'll get project code name and we'll go from there. But certainly, if we know a company, it's just hard to, it's a big universe out there, obviously. So we want to make sure we work smart. But we also get pleased through real estate developers, real estate site consultants in the different markets. So Atlanta, Chicago, Greenville, South Carolina, there's a heavy concentration of site consultants there, based on some history there. Dallas, we spent a lot of time there as well, and Chicago, I think I mentioned that, but absolutely.
And I think comments, the comments you made relate to the natural strength that Milton Tennessee State University provides us. P-vagging on what we know draws people to the university, trying to find those companies on the backside of it, have the connectivity between the two. If that makes any sense.
I just found in my pocket, I heard you gave me a Townsmen's button. I won't put it on today. Give it to her.
All right, Paul, we appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
All right, we'll move to water resource policies, procedures, and general design requirements, provisions.
Mr. Gore has a presentation.
I was going to say Valerie's.
Valerie, oh, yes, he told me that.
Yeah, does anyone have a city of Murfreesboro pen they can give Paul? That was Mr. Smugman's. Oh, here's one right here. Paul, and I think it probably would be Ronnie giving you workout tips, not you giving Ronnie workout tips.
Yes, thank you.
You do fine.
You might know how to work.
Thank you.
Stop.
Oh.
There you go.
Just stand up straighter.
Whatever you need, Valerie.
Put your shoulders back, take deep breaths.
I'm going to need that.
There you go. You're ready.
I'm going to present our, some of our modifications to our policies and procedures and our standard development contract. The policies and procedures were put together, I guess, in 2009, approved by board and council at that time. And we had very few modifications and revisions. For these revisions that I'm going to present, we had a stakeholders meeting in November this, 2018. Only a couple of developers came and none of the two that did come did not have any negative feedback. These changes were presented to our Water and Sewer Board in December, and they're approved. And some of these changes will affect contractors, construction costs, and some will affect the developers' costs. So we are hoping to bring these. If there's not any comment or suggested changes from you all, we hope to bring these back to a future council meeting and to begin these events hopefully around the first March. And to implement these changes. So we'll just start off with ours. Part of those is new surety, warranty surety requirements for water sewer and/or re purified water mains. The forms of surety, we are not making any changes to that. We still accept letter of credit, bonds, or cash check. And the, probably the, these are the biggest, one of the biggest changes we are making is to the surety amounts. Right now, our surety amount is a minimum of $3,000, or 10% of the construction cost for the water sewer or re purified water mains. I can tell you from the pricing that we have on our sewer rehabilitation contract, right now, $3,000 doesn't get you anything. It won't even make a repair on a sewer main if there's something minor wrong. So we have looked, we've looked to increase our minimum surety amount for a project to a minimum of $10,000. And then we go up from there. It depends on whether we're in a public street or right of way. And it also, we factor in our sewer depth. The deeper the sewer is, the more it's going to take if there's a problem with it to repair it. So our cutoff point is right at 12 foot of depth. Anything less than 12 feet on a sewer main, if you're in the public street or right of way, we would go with 10% surety required for the warranty period. Which, by the way, several, several years ago, the city went from a one year to a three year warranty period. The next step is a 25% surety fee required. And that's if we're in private streets or access and within easements. And it's for those, for the sewer mains is greater than or equal to 12 foot. And there will be cases, you know, one reason why we looked at changing these is the last downturn in the economy in building, we were left with a project, it was Three Rivers Section Curry. And there were so many repairs to be made. I think we've had a surety amount of 27,000. And to fix all of the repairs that were left since the developer went under was about 273,000. So we by no means will get that as surety. But this will put us in a better spot than where we are now.
Valerie, we talked at one point about, after what happened at Three Rivers, you know, the bonding companies, their goal is not to pay on bond. I mean, so we talked about not allowing bonds anymore and just requiring letters of credit. You know, there are other, several municipalities that will not even, the letter of credit has to be from a regional bank at a minimum. So is that something that y'all talked about?
I think we did. We did talk about that. I believe we felt like that that would be a large fight on the developers' end. There are many, many developers that do use a bond. And some of the larger developers use bonding instead of letters of credit. We would love to go that route just because of the trouble that we had with the Three Rivers project in getting the bonding money.
Well, it's not even just the Three Rivers. It's really just any development that you've got or any project that a bond's on. You know, the letter of credit is just like, it's basically, I mean, Ron, you know how a layer of credit works. But the bonds, from a city standpoint, are really hard to collect on.
And that would be a change I would love to make if you feel like that you had your buy-in on making that decision.
Mayor, one of the things, just to kind of add to that, one of the things I think the banks are doing for the same reason, because of the downturn, there were some banks that got hung and where, you know, you make immediate demand for those proceeds. And we booked those with not the expectation of having advance on those. And so what's happened, as you circle back through that, we're charging a lot, the banks are charging a lot more for those bonds and for the letters of credit. We'd really rather them to bond.
Sure.
We don't want responsibility, or the banks, I should say, do not want responsibility. So, but the banks, as long as we charge, we're happy to do it.
The letters of credit are just like an outstanding note. A lot of credit that's not been drawn on. I don't know. That may be something that we look at, what other municipalities are doing. Nashville really got hung on several subdivisions where, back in the downturn, the bond desk wasn't keeping up with explorations on bonds. And they had some, some bonds that expired. And you had several subdivisions that there was no bonding to fix any sewer or even pay for the final topping. So that may be something that we really look and get an idea of what, what the percentage may be bonds to letters of credit that we, that we have. And then come up with a, as maybe as a bond, a renewal from a bond goes off, then a letter of credit has to be, has to be put in place. But something to really look at. The way Three Rivers went is really not a good deal for the, for the city, even the point of having to set up, we had to set up a special assessment district to be able to, to recoup some of those, those bonds.
And Mayor, I think I have one more. I think another piece of that was there was language in the city, I can't speak in the city, I don't know the county bonds, where those letters of credit were not auto-renewing from a standpoint, there was an expiration on them. And same thing, you're speaking of through the bonds where they're, they expired. Some of those letter credits expired. The county came to some of the banks and said, hey, you owe us this. And we said, it's on you. Well, now, they fixed that. So that does not go away, which is another thing that's made it unattractive to the banks, which is why it's charged.
The biggest, the biggest thing, liability is the city that we have is not keeping up with those bonds. Because, you know, what's the bond?
Expire.
Expires. You're, you're in trouble.
Well, we can certainly look into that. We have a large database of all of the projects and what sureties we have with each. We can easily get a percentage of bonds to letter of credit to cash.
Maybe if we could get maybe an idea of what the breakdown Maybe if we could get maybe an idea of what the breakdown is and even the amount. You know, if we could say, here's how much we have outstanding in, in letters of credit, here's what we have in, in bonds, and that may give us a, a better idea. And it may be something that we say, if we're gonna get a bond, that we require a higher amount of surety on that bond. 'Cause the issue we had with, with Three Rivers, and I hate to belabor this, but there's no telling how much we spent in internal legal time in, in trying to recoup some of that, and then not really recouping any of it.
Yeah, the dollar amount, I list, I mentioned the $273 was just the physical construction part of it.
And that wasn't accounting city hours and...
I know David, I've spent many, many hours, not only working with us, but also city engineering as well, on the roadway failures too. You all meeting?
Okay. Thank you.
That's back there with his hand on his ear, so that's why I asked.
So, do we wanna, do we wanna wait for you guys to maybe come back with a couple other ideas, or do we need to get this boot going on, or what?
Well, we had the stakeholder meeting, so I would suggest if you all wanna, that, that's a pretty significant change. And, and we, we didn't communicate, this was what we thought we had to say, from staff level, this was as far as we were willing to push the envelope. If you're telling us we can push the envelope farther, you need more information to see how far we wanna push it. We'll get that information back, but I would at least like to send that out, back out to the development community and get their, get their feedback. Unless y'all just say, we don't need the feedback, do it, that's always an option too.
I just hate the way that I can guess what the feedback will be.
Well, feedback may not, well, again, you know, it's, you wanna go through the proper form, right? You wanna, you wanna practice good form, which is communicating with the people that it affects. Even if it's, we're not expecting dialogue back from there, even if it's a one-way, a one-way discourse versus a two-way dialogue, I would still suggest we have the one-way dialogue to let them know that it's coming. So, we can get more information for you all and maybe put together an option A, option B, and let you all tell us what comfort level you have.
My, my guess is most people who are local, and when I say local, are using letters of credit. And most of your national companies are using bonding, is what I would guess. But, the ultimate thing, it's the issue, in using Three Rivers as an example, in that situation, the owners of those homes are the ones who ended up absorbing the road failures because that impact fee was passed on to the, to the customer. And for us, and I don't know if everyone was on the council when this was going through, but we went through two or three years of phone call and email after email with all of the road failures that we had in that, in that subdivision. So, I'm, I'm just thinking worst-case scenario, but it, it may be something that if y'all could come back to us, if the council's okay, with just, just a report that may show us what's the percentages, what's the amounts, and that lets us see how much that we're bonding off if we, if we require that.
We'll get Chris too and Sam, and get that broken down from, I guess, MED, are y'all, do y'all carry, do y'all do, carry any bonds or...
We do no letters, we do not accept letters of credit, we only accept bonds.
You only accept bonds?
Yes.
Are you sure? The only reason I ask is 'cause I just gave a letter of credit to MED last week. For a roadway crossing, right of way.
That would be, that's, that's something a little bit different.
Okay.
For the road board that you did.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In the past, we've done surety bonds.
Okay, yeah, that's the only reason I asked. I should've shut up.
I think the idea would be...
I don't know that.
I'm certainly willing to say that...
A friend of yours.
A friend.
If there's a little more protection we can get without being just completely on earth, I mean, then, then I think we ought to explore that.
The big picture here is right, we need more, you've got deeper sewer in, under asphalt.
Right.
And you need, you need a higher percentage of coverage, if you have a disrepair that you need to make, or repair that needs to be made. Okay? Ready to go, move forward quick?
Thank you.
And then, I've got some pictures I'll show you, but I'm also gonna use those to kinda explain the next slide. And that is our, going along with sewer depth is some new easement requirements. And as you can see in these pictures, when your sewer gets deep, you mess up a whole lot in trying to make repairs. You can tell, you know, you're not necessarily, you've got your trench box in there, but at the top, it's still got to get wider to make it safe where the trench doesn't cause in. So, the deeper the sewer, the wider the hole you're gonna need, so the wider the easement, the wider our disturbance area. So, again, we've kinda gone back and looked at our easement widths. Right now, our minimum is 20 feet wide for any development or between homes on a subdivision. And we're gonna keep our minimum wet sewer easement width and re purified water and water easement width as 20 feet. But, our new easement requirement is based on sewer depth. And I think I just, I grouped sewer in that, but our minimum is, for 20 feet, is only for water and re purified water. We will start going to, and I'll, since I've showed you this, our new easement minimum for sewer, it would be based on depth. And again, that 12 foot, if we're less than 12 foot of depth with our sewer main, then we'll be okay with a 30-foot wide sewer easement. And with a 40-foot easement, that would be for our sewers when they're between 12 and 18 feet deep. And then a 50-foot easement would be required for any sewer over 18 feet deep. So, this kinda gives you an idea of why we are asking for the extra easements, just because it's needed if you ever have to go back and, and do repairs on the sewer. And these are just examples I can come up with. Sewers are based on depth, it's, where we're looking at these is between and behind buildings. Whether it be residential or commercial, our minimum for water re purified is 20 feet. And 30-foot, when it's less than 12 foot of cover, 40-foot, between, oops, between 12 and 18 feet of depth and cover. And 50-foot, where the sewer is 18 foot and deeper. Our next change, we have some requirements now. The picture on the left is a new, obviously a newly constructed subdivision. And our requirement for testing our sewer mains is, is that it looks, and it has the appearance of this, that you've got your base stone down, you've got your curbs in, and your sewer main has all been installed. But, the thing that's not in is binder. The right, the picture on the right-hand side, there's binder asphalt been placed around the manholes. In the manhole casting, you can see in this left-hand picture is with the green valve box covers in the blue. And right now, we allow testing with just the gravel down. But, what that presents, the issue that presents for us right now is after we test the sewer and the manholes with binder, and the paving goes down, a lot of times those castings will get hit and knocked to the side and fill the sewer main with gravel. But yet, we've already done our testing, and then you start having houses connect to it. And before you know it, before we know it, we're being called with a stopped sewer because the gravel has, has filled the sewer and/or manhole and keeping the flow from going through the lines as they should, and it backs up. So, we are gonna start requiring our sewer mains, the sewer mains can be tested prior to binder. But after binder goes in is when we want them to test those manholes. Now, they can certainly pre-test the manholes to make sure everything's good. But, in our inspector, they wouldn't necessarily need to be there for the pre-testing, but our inspector needs to be present. We know the binder's down, we can look in the manhole at that time, make sure it's not full of gravel, and proceed to test the manholes. So, that is one of the changes. The other change, and this was a request from the fire department, or fire and rescue department. The picture on the left is, you'll notice they're flushing that hydrant, and the cap is down here at the, at the base. And those are the old caps that twist on. And if everybody, you know, can picture yourself trying to put your hose on the faucet, sometimes it's hard to get it threaded and on there correctly. Well, the fire department, the fire hydrant to the right, this is, you can see on the large connection, that black device there, that is called a stores connection. And the way that the fire department would connect to that is, it's, I'll show you the next picture. Someone, it looks like this, they're able to come up with their hoses, make it connect, and just turn it to the left or right to make it connect easily. Whereas, the ones on the left, they're trying to get it off. You can tell if your hose has been on the faucet for a long time, it's hard to get off. Fire department did ask us to make this change to the specifications. All of our approved fire hydrant manufacturers will offer this connection. It's more efficient and easier to connect for the fire department. It's an added cost of about $325 for the fire hydrant. CUD, Consolidated Building District, has agreed to move forward with this change as well. And it's no different in the installation for the contractors. Some of the miscellaneous changes, our PVC sewer requirements. We, the PVC comes in two different wall thicknesses. One of the lighter wall thickness or the thinner wall thickness is called SDR 35 PVC pipe. And the heavier wall is SDR 26 PVC. We are no longer going to accept the SDR thinner wall PVC. We've had several, at least a handful of contractors ask us to take that as, out of the specifications as an option because they have had issues in the past with the, that pipe, the thinner wall. And some of them, even though we've told them that we were not gonna take it out several years back, they took it upon themselves to go ahead and start using the thicker wall SDR 26 PVC pipe. But, we have seen kind of, with that trend of the contractor using the SDR 26 PVC and the issues we've had with SDR 35, we've decided to take that pipe out of our specifications. Hold harmless agreements, we have been working with the legal department. We've had, you know, with the development of commercial sites, commercial development, in places where we have existing water sewer mains, those sites tend to get tighter and tighter. And with new stormwater regulations and landscaping and that type thing, the department decided that we would like to begin having the developer sign hold harmless agreements to let them know if they put stormwater features over our sewer easement and sewer main or landscaping. And we're talking more specialty stormwater features, far as pervious concrete, pavers, those things, bio swells, which are things that our water and sewer department and maintenance crews, we don't have the specialty or the training to put those features back. We just, you know, have the expertise in repairing what needs to be fixed on the mains. And so, we asked these developers to sign hold harmless agreements, that they will be responsible for putting those features back. And that we would only be responsible for the repairs to the sewer main and refilling, refilling the trench back to the elevation and length. It is a recorded document, and like I said, it's been prepared by the legal department. We give those to the developers and then assign them and have them recorded and brought back to this for our files. And some of the minor changes are to our water meter installations. The picture on the left is a three-inch water meter. And we, the department, these meters are kind of infrequent. The timing of getting those meters in after the developer pays for them is always gonna struggle to get, get them ordered, get them installed to fit their schedules. And so, we decided we would put it in the contractor's hands where he can just per our specifications. So, he has the capability of ordering it per our specifications and making it fit into his timeline rather than us trying to coordinate so much. And the picture on the right is what we call a gang vault. If we have a town home, we used to set individual meters for each town home, which would take up quite a bit of space. So, we, this is something that Consolidated Utility District has done, and we've seen it, liked it. But, it's one vault, but as you can see, it's got two, four, six, about eight places for meters to be installed, and it's just in one spot. So, for town homes, this would be mostly used in town homes where there's not a lot of space. They can be traffic rated, if there's not a lot of green space left, they, they can be going in the driveways or under a parking spot and made to be traffic rated. So, the next picture's just the details of those. And that's it.
Any questions?
What comment about back on the line of credits and the bonds? Might be worth kinda as part of this whole bringing, you know, a little more coordination and all that kinda stuff to this thing is perhaps, I wonder, if I'm a developer and I'm needing to go to get a, maybe a bond from them and a letter of credit from some other city organization, and who knows what else from the next organization? I mean, is it worth us looking into the possibility of coordinating that where we might be able to tell the developer, maybe we can do one coordinated letter of credit and it would cover all of the city? I mean, it would need to be the city departments, right? Probably wouldn't be our expanded CUD, but is that worth looking into?
I think that's a great, great thought, I had the same thought, we were talking about it, since we're all kind of on a little bit different page. But, I think the permits, licensure, or land software, PLL software that we're looking at, City Works, honestly, I know that's something that I, you know, think we've had in front of you. It's a more coordinated effort from taking a project from its initial conceptual property permitting component all the way through the build-out. I would think that there would be a mod, there would be some form, or some module within that software that could coordinate the bonding and the letter of credit for all the items needed that are in the public, you know, set here in the right of way. So, yes, I think it would be good to explore, and as we're going through that implementation, if you all approve the funding of that software, we'd definitely be checking that out, making sure we can do it.
One of the benefits may be, and you know, I mean, just for easy math, if we're doing $100 here and the electric department's $100, you know, the streets are $100 or whatever, we may be able to get that number down a little bit because it's not likely you're gonna have an all-three event, you know what I mean? You know, where somebody's gonna fail on necessarily all three perhaps, where, you know, we don't have to get 300. If we do one big one, we might go do 250, reduce the burden on the developer, but make it easier. But, we're all still covered, or covered even better than what we are currently, you know, I mean, so...
As long as I think it's itemized out and everybody has the itemized what their, what their costs are, and if it can all be covered under one bond or letter of credit wherever out we go, then I would think that would be what the PLL software, that PLL software would be able to track that. So, I'm, 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 I don't know that, I think, but that's obviously, that's something that we think as we go through this implementation of that software, that we need to make sure it can or can't, what the limitations are. But I agree, and if it can't, probably a way to do it anyway, if we just.
Issue is just going to be on timing, you know, because we may have a landscape bond that you got to hold in place for three years. You may have a sewer bond that may be in place for a year and.
They all finish up at different times.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I know, you know, you can reduce it. I know with, with the fairies when we had their, they bonded two million dollars when they did the can and sewer. And so every year that, that letter of credit is reduced. So I mean, as long as you've got something tracking and you know when some component of the software or some component of the project can be released, then you just can reduce, reduce the letter of credit.
The idea, I guess if I'm just trying to help myself as a developer, which I don't understand all that stuff exactly, but if I could go one time and get it knocked out once, I'd be a lot more likely to want to go do it.
Right.
Rather than having to go through it four or five or six times, however many times that is. If it's all a bunch of city departments.
That's, that's the whole, that's the whole premise behind the PLL software is to just create more of that one-stop-shop environment so you're not having to go to three or four different offices. You just.
It'd be a win-win.
Right.
If we can get more coverage, you know, if we can get a better suite of coverage as far as our risk and they've got one place to have to go do it instead of five or however many there are.
Right.
Especially speak to the leadership credit because most of the banks are going to waive it. Their three-years, three-year commitments, the banks are going to want to do them annually because we're going to want to get new financials, take a look at what's going on. If we want to charge more because the risk profiles change, we're going to do that. So. It was looking into, thanks.
Thank you. Now we would.
Should we please try to look forward to the other requirements to take the surety?
I think we'll just, we'll get something back to you pretty quick on the surety requirements. I'd rather just implement it all at once. So we'll just hold off, I mean, on implementing until we get the, I'm not saying we can get it all under one letter of credit, but get, whether we take a letter of credit, yeah, that, that's, I think that's a future condition, right?
All right. Thank you. I move to review of the pension plan.
We've, as part of our budgeting process and we'll continue with this as we get into budgeting more, but as part of our initial budgeting process and because the pension committee made some recent decisions, we've been taking a look at our pension and pension costs and wanted to bring that to council early on. Count, the, as the council communication says, previously we've set our long-term rate of return and this is the anticipated rate that we would earn. There's, there's a lot of factors go into it, but to summarize it, the anticipated rate we would earn over a long period of time and, and the discount rate that we use to discount our future liabilities to present value. So they had set that at seven point two-five as our pension committee has. And they, they made a change back in September based on some information they had. What, they changed to six point seven-five and this morning we, we were able to provide them, I say we, Michael Guyton and our, our finance team was able to provide us with more information that helped with, I think, a decision today that went to seven percent, which is important. The important part of that to the budget is that sets how much we're going to fund our pension plan each year annually. Among other things, we also have to account for it and I'm not going to explore the accounting. I'll leave that to Melissa CPAs on how it's accounted for because that is a complicated area as well. But from a funding standpoint for next year, we will have to fund an additional, about additional six hundred thousand dollars into our pension plan now that we're at seven percent. If we'd gone to six point seven-five, we would have been up over a million dollars. So it was a decision that has a significant impact on us. We, we are, as we go through this year and prepare our budget, seeing some additional costs that are pretty substantial that we'll have to accommodate next year. This is one of them and that's why we wanted to let council early on know that. That's one aspect of our pension plan. If you have any questions about that, I'll, I'll quickly defer them to people that know more. I can explain it, happy entertainment. The next, the next aspect is there was a request to look at COLA increase for our retirees. And we did that, we did that with a study and we had to do some work for a little bit on, on what our discount rate would be. As I just explained, you have with the agenda packet information, those who don't have a computer, there's copies of them that American passed down or pass out, it's all right.
I thought there was just one.
Yeah, no, there's five of them. It's, it's then. If you look at page four, which is the funding impact of it. Now, if you have questions about the accounting impact, as I said, I'll, I'll defer those. But the funding impact is what it does to our budget for the next year. Well, we asked, we asked Mr. Guyton to, to look at a couple of different scenarios. At the discount rate, because we knew we were going to be discussing that, the pension committee would be discussing that, different levels of the rate increase and then different dates of retirement. So we've, we've kind of accomplished the discount rate issue. So if you just look at the seven percent column on page four, it's really the numbers that we're, we're dealing with from a funding standpoint. The COLAs, whether they're one, two, or three percent, that kind of speaks for itself. And then the retirement dates, I will tell you what, what those represent. The retirement dates were seven-one, so everyone who would require or had retired July first of last year, the, the number under the seven percent, for example, one percent COLA, that would represent next year's budget, having seventy-eight thousand four hundred dollars to apply to it. Two thousand fifteen was the year that the MAG study went into effect. So that was a, a change to our, our compensation plan. So those who retired before that date didn't, the change didn't accrue to them. So that was an important date because we had a different pay structure before, before that. Two thousand eight was the last COLA that was provided to retirees, which is why the two thousand eight was studied. And then the nineteen ninety-eight date is a date twenty years ago. So it, it represents those who would have retired twenty, twenty-eight years or more ago as of July the first nineteen ninety-eight. So with that, I think it's council's decision on, on what we will factor into the budget for next year preliminarily. Of course, you always change it with the budget if you have a different decision, but at least preliminarily, what number we will work with, again focusing on the seven percent column and then deciding how much COLA to provide and then what retirees that you would like to pick up with, with that COLA increase.
So have we made a decision to give raises this year to our current employees?
We, well, as far as factoring into the budget, because you guys wouldn't make that decision. But no, we haven't. We haven't come to a number yet on our, our employee.
So I'm sorry, I had to.
Now, if, if I could, to explain, now, we did implement step programs. So the step programs do have built-in those. Now, those are an anticipated increase we would have for the employees in the step programs based on council's decision because those, you know, we want to be very clear about the expectation in the step programs that it's an annual review as well for council. But those, those are, are increased. But the ones in open, what we call open range that aren't in a step program, we haven't made a decision on that yet. What we recommend for a pay increase.
All right, can I ask one more question? Can, are we, are we making the definite decision on this today or we just review?
This, you can review this. If you can give us a decision on what you would like us to factor into the budget, not a final decision because once you see the budget, you'll know more. But this will give you some idea of the scope, of the magnitude of increases by a certain percentage and a certain retiree date. And we'll take that and we'll factor it into the budget.
So Craig, sorry I had to be gone for the first part of this.
It's all right.
If we're looking at, at page three and page four here.
Right.
Are these adjustments, ongoing adjustments?
These would be.
Just a one-time?
Well, page three is the accounting effect of it. So that, that falls under the Gatsby rules and that's, that's rolling off a number into a bigger number so that we account for it in that, in that respect. So if you look at page four, that's the annual budgeting that would, that would occur to each of these groups.
So, so I think.
Each year.
And I apologize. This is, what we're looking at here is the idea, if this is kind of a follow-up on some of the discussions we've had, I think that Mr. Schmoller already brought up in the past, which is basically, hey, what can we do to help people who've been retired for a lot of years who have any kind of, okay. So if we, looking at page four.
Right.
You know, if, let's just use the top line for just an easy number to look at here. If we were to say, okay, everybody who retired before July first of two thousand eighteen, if we wanted to go out and give them a one percent increase in their pension, what they receive in their pension, it's going to cost us seventy-eight thousand four hundred dollars to our budget this year.
This next budget year.
Yeah.
Yeah, the next budget year.
Coming budget year.
And of course, that'll be reassessed, you know, going forward, but it'll be approximately, that is approximately what you'd have.
That amortizes over ten years, so basically it's, it's a cost over ten years. So we, we took the, the total increase and giving a one percent increase for everybody. We saw it on the previous page, it was five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Amortize that over, over ten years at seven percent, it comes out to be seventy-eight thousand four hundred dollars.
Why would we amortize it over ten years?
The reason is that, this is a couple of things. First, on accounting side, you have to recognize the full amount. Full amount will hit your accounting numbers. On the other side for funding, you, because this group you're trying to, to increase their benefit, their life expectancy is short, so you want to try to pay for those over the time period that they're going to receive those benefits. You don't want to stretch that out twenty or thirty years. You want to pay for it during the time period that they're going to receive the benefits.
Does this assume that we're going to continue to give them one percent more of their pension for the rest of their lives?
You're going to give them a one-time increase. So if somebody's getting five hundred dollars, you're going to give them a one percent increase.
Five hundred and five.
Five hundred and five and you're going to, it's going to continue to be five oh five.
For the rest of their life. That's how you've assumed it.
Right.
Because there's another possibility here, which is just a one-time, I mean, like a one-time. You get five hundred and ten dollars per month this year. Or I, I mean, I, I know that's just been part of what's been thrown out there. I'm just kind of trying to make sure that, what we're looking at here, what is it?
Right. It's a, it's a one-time increase that could be worth for the rest of their time. And you're not going to increase it in the future.
Did you arrive at the ten-year to kind of piggyback on Rick's question? Obviously folks that retire and retired before twenty eighteen or retired before nineteen ninety-eight, there's a large span of time between the two of those. Is that ten-year an average of all the people in the mix?
Yes, and also it goes by some actuarial standards that have written out that when you make plan changes, you have to look at the population that you're going to be providing those benefits for. And they would typically say for, for, for a retiring group, you would probably amortize it over ten years because that, that's pretty common, common to do. Because you want to pay those off fairly rapidly. You don't want to be paying for these, I mean, let's say you do the, the group that was hired before, that retired before ninety-eight. We actually even cut that down to seven-year because they thought that they're fairly old. You want to pay those people, pay that liability off quicker because you don't want to push it down to other, uh, future generations.
And when we look at making a decision on this, I'd like to see us have it ongoing. I know it's going to cost.
Well, ongoing. What you.
In, in terms of saying it's, if we go from five hundred dollars to five hundred and five dollars in that example.
It's going to stay at five oh five.
It'll stay at five oh five for the rest of their life unless some future council raises it again. But you're not talking about going from five hundred to five oh five to five ten.
No, no, I'm just saying, I would like, for people that own fixed income, and I always talk about this, you know, everything is going up, food and everything. So if we give them, to me, a one-time, that's just like putting Band-Aid over the problem. I mean, you know, I'm a retiree.
Yeah.
And I'm going to receive that same check until I die, you know? No matter what, Kroger goes up or Walmart, I still get that same check. So therefore, I would like to see the retirees have an ongoing increase. It's not much, but anything helps when you're a retiree on a fixed income. I think it'd be more aggravating to give that one time than to let it go on.
That's cool. I just wanted to make sure how you did the accounting. I was trying to make sure I knew how you did the accounting.
Is, is there precedent for having made adjustments in the past in pension like this? What, what have we done?
We have. Michael, you want to tell?
Back, back in two thousand, I think it was two thousand six, they gave you an increase. What they did, and the previous increase was, let me give my notes here, I'm sorry. It was nineteen ninety-seven was an increase and then nineteen, and then two thousand six they came back. And what they did, they looked at what the increase in CPI was from two thousand six, I mean, from nineteen ninety-seven, two thousand six, and they gave everybody that increase. So at that time period, majority of people got like a twenty-six percent increase in their, in their benefit. So they were getting a hundred dollar a month, now it went to one twenty-six and it continued at one twenty-six up to the current date now. The trend now in governmental plans, a lot of government plans are doing away with, who had permanent COLAs, they're trying to cut those back or reduce them some because of the costs that you're incurring there. And the city never gave a permanent one, they would do the ad hoc one to catch people up. And for this study, they just asked me to do one, two, or three percent of one-time, one-time increase in that. So, but if you get to more elaborate, it's going to cost you more.
And if we were to go that route, I think we'd have to take a look at our plan and see what we need to do, plan provisions and if we need to change those or not.
Yeah. Well, you know, I've never, every pension that I've ever been associated with in my line of work, it's a, it's a fixed number, you know? I mean, what I see, what people get out there.
And the private sector, hardly anybody has cost of living in their plan. And the governmental sector, it had been very common for a lot of entities to do that, but they, they have found out in the long term that it's very costly to provide that benefit. Because you saw in just that one period, we increased benefits twenty-six percent for, for, for the retirees. And your number of retirees have jumped from like a hundred to two hundred and sixty since that time that we gave the last increase. The other thing you might want to consider is looking at your whole population. In two thousand ten, you, you closed a defined benefit plan and put in a defined contribution plan for all those employees. Those employees are now incurring inflation risk, investment risk, longevity risk. The old employees who are earning this plan, they don't have any, they, they don't have the investment risk because the city has to fund their benefit no matter what. Longevity risk, as long as they live, they're going to get the check. Now, they do have the inflation issue, but on that, so you got two groups of employees. One, you know, you're going to offer this to these old, the former employees and not to more recent employees hard after two thousand ten. There's a little difference there. But I think, I didn't want to bring that up to, to point that out to you. I mean, you had to decide.
What are some, what are some pitfalls as far as just our pros and cons, how everyone look at it of any of these dates? You know, I think our kind of general tone on this over the last few months has been for the people who've been in the plan a really long time and haven't had a, you know, so it skews me down towards the bottom two cents of these numbers personally. But is there any kind of pitfall that I might not be thinking about here to doing the two thousand eight and beyond group versus the two thousand eighteen? What's the?
Yeah, I, I can understand that the ones who've been retired a long time that they, and they haven't had an increase since, you know, two thousand six, you know, they have suffered some because of inflation over that time. The ones that retired recently, you know, they enjoyed the pay increases they got in the recent years with inflation and everything built in there.
Right.
So, so you have that. So the one pitfall I see is that, you know, you cut off that line, there's always going to be that one person who misses the cutoff and you got to deal with them as well. And then, then once you do it this time, then you're kind of sitting there present. You're going to have to do that again somewhere down the road.
I think that's what we did in two thousand six as well, though. I believe we did pick a group that had been retired a certain amount of years, didn't we? We had done it before.
Yeah, I think they haven't been retired. They might have limited, I can't remember what person they limited to. I thought we still have the majority of the people, though, if they had been retired for a certain time period.
I think a big part of this is what we're talking about as wages have grown, you know, from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand eighteen, those retirees that retired in two thousand, before two thousand eighteen, generally speaking, are going to have a much higher pension because the wage growth has been higher that sort of time. So to me, rather than looking at, you know, specific numbers, I would probably, if, if we, what the council decides to do something, I'd be in the direction of a higher cost of living increase for those that retired prior to nineteen ninety-eight and a lower cost of. for those that retired prior to nineteen ninety-eight, and a lower cost of living increase, moving up the ladder to no increase to those that were retired. Now, everybody, everybody wants an increase, I mean, I get that, but I don't think that was the spirit of this, of this conversation, was to make sure everybody got a pension increase.
But two thousand ten's when retirement went away, is that correct?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
So the pension plan stops in two thousand ten, so. So if we were to implement this, this year, with those that retired in two thousand eight, next year moving to two thousand nine, and the following year moving to two thousand ten, that they would get the same increase. Then you wouldn't have anybody who wouldn't ultimately, after ten years of retirement, see this COLA, cost of living increase. It would incrementally come on with them, that they may not get it this year because they're nine years out, but next year they would be ten years out, and, and they could get the same effect next year.
So would you continue that indefinitely?
No.
Cause we've got active.
Well, in two thousand ten, it stops.
He said for three years, base it in over three years.
Oh, just three years, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to be retired.
Well, it's, it's gonna cost you more if you do it straight to two thousand ten, because you'll have some people drop off the bottom, they're gonna die here at the bottom end and drop off, as opposed to the number that you're probably gonna add. There's some relationship there to the number of people dropping off retirement plan versus the number that would be coming on, so you would gradually be increasing it as you're gradually decreasing it on the bottom side.
Of course, the flip of that is if you retired before nineteen ninety-eight, your salary is not as comparable to somebody who retired in two thousand ten.
Right, right. And, and that, that's my whole intent, was to have some impact on those who have gone for ten years, and not, not only have they not kept up with inflation, but they haven't seen any increase, increase whatsoever. And, and so, so, I mean, but if, but if, if you're beyond, if you're inside that ten-year period, going back from eighteen to oh eight, then you were making more when you retired, so it's not going to be as hard on them as it would be these that have the fixed number that's further back. And so, and, and if, and if you go back twenty years, I just don't think you're, I mean, you're gonna help the people who've been gone for twenty years, but I don't think it's gonna affect enough number that it's really going to help anybody, it's just gonna help a few people. I mean, I think if you go back ten years, I think there's probably quite a few employees that, that, that would encompass, at least by the numbers, it would indicate that it would encompass by. But uh.
We said it's gone from a hundred to two hundred and sixty in thirteen years.
Yeah.
Out of twelve, you know, twelve years, so.
So about four times.
No.
Well, you got, you got about ninety-eight retired before June first, two thousand eight. I said about, you have ninety-eight before June, July first, two thousand eight.
Yeah, so that would be that hundred participants that you were talking about in two thousand six-ish.
Two thousand fifty, uh, the exact number was a hundred and fifteen, and as of the last count, we got about two hundred and sixty retirees, so, big, big increase in retirees. And it's gonna continue.
Something to be, you know, something that's important here is when we're talking about what we do here versus what we do for our current employees, we gotta kinda keep in mind, you know, a two percent, you know, cost of living adjustment here, um, does not compound like a two percent raise does, and it's for only two hundred and sixty people rather than, rather than however many we've got still in, in the plan, you know.
But, but if you, if you make it beyond that two thousand ten mark, then you've got people who have 401Ks and things that were emphasized as the, you need to be putting into these for your retirement, versus you really didn't have that much emphasis on it prior to that. People were just saying, well, I'm gonna retire, and I'll get my retirement, I'm gonna live off of that. I, I think the philosophy of most employees has changed through that process, but.
Where are we on the, the other part of the discount rate cost? I mean, what, what's, are we, is, is that number going down?
The long-term rate of return?
Yeah, the rate of return.
It's going from seven and a quarter to seven, that's the recommendation.
All right. And do we owe all that, or is that just a?
No, that pension committee was done at seven this morning.
What's the increased cost of the pension then, because of that?
Six hundred.
About six hundred thousand.
About six hundred thousand for funding for next year.
It's page three. So I mean, that, that's the GASB requirement that we determine that, that's gotta go into, we've got to put, if we do, I mean, if we did the whole.
For the government-wide, we have to show the whole liability.
Right.
And you'll see that on our audit report, which Mr. Jobe's gonna present at our next council meeting. It is already on our website, and I could've brought you all copies today, I didn't think about it when I was running out the door, but if you come by, I'll be glad to give you a hard copy. But that, that shows up on the government-wide, it shows all of our liabilities, our pension, our OPEF. It does not show up in the individual fund statements, like the general fund and risk management individually.
Is there any sense to, to doing this, just to doing the numbers based off of two thousand ten? If that was part of the, I mean, we've got nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand eight, and then fifteen and eighteen, those are not completely random, but not necessarily our only four choices, right?
No.
No.
We just had to give him.
Yeah, something, something.
We gotta start someplace, right?
Yeah. So would there be sense in just laying, and we could use around about numbers, no, we could just go straight to two thousand ten, and we know the number is gonna be a little bit higher than thirty-nine thousand, you know, if I'm looking at like two percent on the oh eight number, it's gonna be a little bit more than thirty-nine thousand dollars, I mean, not. Because going all the way to fifteen gives it thirty-nine and ninety-seven.
Well, see, if we do, the, the number, so according to the accounting impact, we show our liability goes up, but do we, do we have to set aside those assets immediately at the same time?
We do not.
Okay.
We do, we do, uh, put in our footnotes that we are still on the pay-as-you-go plan.
Okay.
And so, that, it explains why the liability is growing, we don't have a trust set up for this. And, um, some cities have done that, and some have not. You may speak more to what you've seen, but, but we do, we do put that in our footnotes that we're still pay-as-you-go. That's why the liability's so large.
Cause like MED is almost, their, their pension is fully funded.
Yeah.
Overfunded.
Well, I'm thinking about OPEF, but, but for the pension, we, we do fund, uh, Finley computes that every year, we fully fund what we're required to fund, um, but we still have twenty-three years left on our amortization.
Twenty-three on the amortization, right.
Do you know what our total, um, percent per dollar that we're, at one point, when we, when we got out of our, in two thousand ten, we were funding almost fifteen percent per dollar, fifteen cents per dollar to our retirement, do you know what that's gone down to?
I know a hundred percent of payroll, we've been contributing around the twelve percent left, twelve percent of payroll of those people in the plan.
Right.
Almost, well, the audit was almost thirteen last year, twelve point eight seven, I think it was last year.
Do you all have any directions you wanna give?
I think one of, I mean, you may also wanna just look at the amount people are receiving, because if you have, just in, in general, I mean, we, uh, we went through, you have some people who are, their check is less than five hundred dollars a month, and that, you know, maybe you wanna figure out who needs it, because if you got somebody getting a check for three thousand or, or, or four thousand dollars a month, do they really need an increase? Because they probably were financially able to put in the, in a defined contribution plan or set aside money aside in an IRA, I mean, I mean, that's another thing you might wanna consider, you know.
I was just getting ready to ask you that, to ask, what did you sort of recommend? And looking at our figures.
See, I gotta combine, let's see, I, we did some studying, we, we broke it down, and maybe I'll share that letter with Craig, and he'll pass it on to the council, that I, I sent Pam Russell when we started this project. And we broke down, uh, by departments, uh, benefit level, you know, between, or less than five thousand, all the way up to, to almost, well, this one only goes up to about, uh, less than five hundred dollars a month, up to five thousand, increments of five hundred, and you can see how many people are effective. And this made me think of it from that viewpoint, majority of people probably have the low amounts, are gonna be those who retired prior to ninety-eight most likely, and that, but that's, that's another way you could look at it, you know.
My gut is to, if we're gonna give a raise, we're gonna probably include everybody, be my gut. I just, I don't want.
I mean, when we do sit raises normally for city employees, we do a percentage, and, and we don't go back and say, based on pay rate, although I've already did that a few times while we might should it, but uh, I mean, and I don't know about everybody else, I'm calling it with two percent if you go back to two thousand eighteen, or, I'm sorry, oh eight, two thousand eight, um, that's a seven percent rate, I mean.
That's a good place to start for me.
Yeah, and, and then, not being disrespectful for what you said, but let's say somebody was receiving four thousand a month, and, you know, we say, well, hey, they probably won't need that, but we don't know what kind of expenses they have, they could have medical expenses, they could have kids in college, and, you know, you know, so, yeah.
I, I think it should, I, I agree, it should be across the board, I mean, I'm just throwing out, if you just wanna look at a group of people, you know.
Oh yeah, we respect that, we really thank you for your.
I'm just throwing out ideas and things to look at different ways.
And you're the expert, and we, we appreciate that, and you've done a fabulous job.
But given the two percent this year to two thousand eight earlier, I would like for us to kinda keep in mind that next year we might go after those who retired in two thousand nine only, only, and the following year do two thousand ten only, so that they wind up with the same incremental increases as those that retired before two thousand eight, this year did. So that they all ultimately get the raise, and even those for some, it might be over a three, two, three-year period.
I'd like to see us, and that's a thought, I kinda like to see us painted with the same brush, but uh, we can look at everything, different options.
So you're gonna add in thirty-nine thousand dollars or so to the budget? Is that how it works?
Well, what will happen, he will give us our contribution rate, and he'll need to, he'll need to fold this into the rate he's already determining based on all the other factors of our pension plan. So this gives you a.
And just to, when are you gonna make this effective? Cause if you make it effective for seven one two thousand nineteen, you won't have to fund it until the, the following year, technically.
It would be seven one two thousand nineteen.
He wants, yeah, the next year.
Yeah. So it would, in fact, your budget for this year would be the following year.
Well, no, because you're doing the rate for fiscal year twenty right now.
Budget we're approving.
It's fiscal year twenty, which starts July first, twenty nineteen, so the rate you're doing now, this would be part of it.
Right, but what's gonna be the effective date of this increase?
July.
Seven one two thousand nineteen.
This year, July.
So we'll have to start paying it.
But we, we base your budget on the seven one two thousand eighteen valuation results.
That's true.
Your plan infects at that time, so it'd be delayed, delayed a year. So you would have some time to think about this, well, no, you're not even gonna give them July first.
Well, we wanna go ahead and give it to them July first.
Our funding factor.
And I'd like to see, just to learn more, you know, Saturday, if you send the town, we all get a copy of that.
I think we have one more question, Mr. Penelope.
Michael.
Michael, we've had, over the years, we've had quite a bit of talk about, um, public safety, early retirement, I know Madeline was asked about this a couple of times, but I, I think it would be good to get with staff to see, you know, it's, it's, it's easy for us to throw out that number. My, my thought, the, the twenty-five or fifty, whichever, is that right?
Twenty, twenty years and fifty-five, or twenty, drop to fifty, yeah.
But I, I think that, I, I would be interested to see what that number would be.
If you drop it down to fifty?
Yeah.
You can do that?
And I, I think the other part too is, the number that would be good to see is how many media and public safety employees would be eligible for retirement, where we would end up having, we would end up decimating our police and fire department, when all of a sudden you've got five hundred employees, you got two hundred that are eligible for retirement, and how that you would, um.
Yeah, there'd be a cost associated with that, for sure.
Yeah.
And I think, taking a little poll, haven't gotten around to everybody, but in the fire department, seems like the number is, is high, is eligible, the number of people that actually said they would actually retire, out of that a hundred something, was less than twenty, cause a lot of them said they would be eligible, but they couldn't afford to be. So that's the interesting thing that we're gonna look at the numbers, see.
Catch twenty-two of that is trying to, you know, we would have to budget.
We have to budget based on qualification.
So, you know, cause someone may would.
Change them on.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out how you, how you do that.
Right. I'd like to share, there's another city I work with, they have rule of eighty for retirement, and what they have, what has happened is that, uh, and they also have a supplement benefit that's, in addition to the regular retirement benefit, they have a supplement till they get to the person gets to age sixty-two. What has happened, they put that in in their early nineties, not thinking what might happen in the future, and the employees got smart enough to realize, wow, I can retire at rule of eighty, maybe at age fifty-two, I'm getting my full pension, I'm getting the supplement to age sixty-two, and I can go get another job. So they have seen a lot of quality employees leave and, and go work for another police department, fire department, get another job, uh, they had their, one of their finance people, and she left, and then she ended up getting another job at another city, and that, so, so you have a risk there of losing people a little bit earlier.
Incentivizing.
That's something you need to, you know.
We've seen that, I mean, we, you know, Jim Crumlin was a great example, and Jim retired from one organization to come, to come here, Dana, Philip Lem, with MED, I mean, there's, you know, and I don't blame him for that.
Oh, no, I mean, you, you.
Yeah, you're basically getting paid twice, I mean, it's, it's a great, great benefit. You know, the thing we've really, sitting here in two thousand ten, when we made the change from the defined benefit and the defined contribution, some of the things that we talked about or that we were told, you know, at that time, and I'm not, we couldn't afford to continue to keep going down the road we were going down, we, you know, we couldn't, if that number was continuing to go up, but looking at what, what has happened from just a public safety standpoint, and even from what we've dealt with, with Murphy'sboro Water and Sewer, you know, we kept, hey, it's portable, it's portable, you know, someone can take it with them, and that's exactly what's happened. I mean, we've been exactly like the private sector, our turnover rate has gone up from where it used to be, because I, I would contend it's not pay, I think we're pretty comparable, but that benefit, of that defined benefit is a com, as opposed to the defined contribution, has increased our turnover. You know, that's not, I don't think that's gonna change any, anytime, because people will take that retirement with them.
Okay, to me, um, you know, there's a few things that I'm, I think we're, this is certainly worth looking at on, on this, and, um, a couple of things that I'm concerned with, and I've made, I've made my stance on this fairly clear as, as it relates to, you know, moving to an early retirement model, you know, to push that age back, I, I think it would be really destructive to our public safety areas. And it doesn't mean, I don't love them or any of that, it just means, man, we gotta have them, it means I do love them, because we gotta have those folks that have been here a really long time to stay here. Um, well, you know, part of what that leads into then is, uh, and I might ask you to, to put together two sets of numbers, I think they'll be fairly easy, one would be, you know, what would be the impact? Right now, we've got, you know, we basically, everybody stops getting credit after thirty years. You know, like, you know, once you've been here thirty years, I mean, so the exact opposite of moving the retirement date back, I'm trying to figure out how do we incentivize them to stay longer?
But you do get credit, it's based on your high five salary, so as your salary grows, it's still based on your high five.
Assuming your salary goes up in those five years, you get, you get a benefit that way.
You get the annual raise.
You just don't get any kind of a, another two percent or whatever, right?
But sixty percent is, is a very favorable amount.
Yeah, it's a good number. So here, kind of, here, here's what I'm getting at, is one of the ways I think we might be able to achieve this, there are a couple of things that this might help, and this may or may not be your, it may be someone else's, but, you know, there's, one of the things to incentivize people to stay here longer is to somehow not have a disincentive to stay, i.e., if you're here at thirty years and you gotta risk, you know, if I'm, if I'm here thirty years, and if I die while I'm still working, what does my wife get on the pension? Does she get any discount, does she lose anything if that happens? You know, well, the other thing would be, if that's the case, I'd rather go ahead and retire, get my pension, go work somewhere else, so that at least I know I've got my, my pension protected, right?
There, there is protection, there, there is a spouse, a survivor benefit in, in the plan.
Is it the full amount?
I think it, is it? I'm thinking, is it 50%? I don't remember coming in.
So if you die while you're working, your spouse gets 50% of your pension?
Probably 50%, right.
All right, if you retire right at 30 years, you ensure that your spouse is going to get 100%, if that's the way you choose it, right?
Yeah, I mean, you choose that option for...
Yeah, you choose 100% survivor option, your spouse is going to get 100% of that pension number, right?
And there's reductions for taking that option.
100% of what the pension number is going to be.
Right.
100% of what the pension number is going to be, as opposed to 50%, which would be 30% if you got the maximum pension, right? Follow me, 60%?
I follow you. Chris McFarland's here, and she could probably answer these questions better, because she works with it every day.
Well, here's my, my solution, the idea is, I'm curious of whether or not we could do some, you know, for people who've been here 30 years, could we add on an additional, you know, voluntary, or, you know, life policy, could we add to what we offer our employees who have been here, maybe, it seems like it'd be a lot cheaper than doing it through the pension, where when we, we give our employees a certain life insurance, you know, if they've been here 30 years, could we, you know, double that after they've been here 30 years, that would help, help to make up for that. I mean, look, I'm telling you right now, if I had been here 30 years, I'd be looking for somewhere to go pronto, because there's no way I'd put half of that pension number at risk for my wife. There's, I mean, that, I don't know where, how, you know, everybody else may think different, but I would absolutely be looking for some way to cover my wife. That's a huge number.
The difference though, if you're an active employee and you pass away, then your spouse would receive two times your annual salary, and so there is that life insurance component that they would receive, plus any of your vacation or whatever else you have there. But the survivor benefit for an active employee is 50% joint and survivor annuity if you're married. If you're sick, there's a single lump sum, one-time payment that's payable upon death. All of these things, city council approved as the years went through, and so we...
50% versus 60% or 50% of the 60% number?
50% of the joint and survivor annuity.
Yeah, so if, if you make an easy math, $100,000 a year, you're going to get 60,000, you know, 100,000 years, your high five. You get 60,000 a year in pension, right? If you're fully, fully in.
Say that part again?
If, if your high five number is $100,000 per year.
Right, okay.
Then you're going to get $60,000 a year in pension, if you're fully qualified, right?
Right.
If I die before I retire, maybe even I've left the job and I'm on my 18 months' worth of sick and vacation time, cement truck gets me, my wife's going to get 30 a year.
Correct, that is correct.
Yes.
Plus the life insurance.
Half of the benefit.
It's assuming that you as an employee would have chosen that...
Right.
We're just making that assumption, that, that when you retire, you're going to choose to get 50% so that when you leave, when you, when you pass.
And not every married employee picks that.
Right.
I mean, there's seven good options, seven good annuity options to pick, and not every married couple picks that option, I mean, there's other options to pick too, so.
But we picked that to make sure the surviving spouse got something.
Yes, they do get something, plus they get the life insurance. And so when retirees, when you become a retiree, but you lose the life insurance, we do not offer life insurance for our retirees.
So if you, if you passed away while you're still working at the city, it's, it's two times your...
Two times your salary.
Annual salary.
Annual salary.
And that's payable immediately from the life insurance.
So just kind of as quick...
Which is group life, but you can always supplement, I mean, you know, you can always
If you're making $60,000 bucks...
Maximize it with life insurance, if you're healthy, and that's really cheap.
Yeah, that's kind of, I mean, look, here's what I'm trying to get at is, if, you know, what I'm driving towards is to try to have some incentive for people to stay beyond the 30 years, and not give them an incentive to leave as soon as they hit 30 years. That's kind of what I'm trying to drive towards here, and maybe a cheap way to do that would be to increase that two times your life insurance policy, you know, two times...
We'd have to look at, see if that group would qualify as a separate group for life insurance, and what the premium would be, because now you're talking about an older population and an older group, and so your life insurance might be, if you're not healthy, not good.
And also, I mean, if you're married, you know, so, you know, there's a different survivor benefit for single people.
Yeah.
And well, with the employer.
Well, I look at that.
The concept though, we understand the concept, we're trying to figure out something.
And the reason I brought it up in this setting is because there's people in here who, you got, like you guys, who look at this stuff and deal with it every day, all day, that I'd be glad to hear some, some, you know, some feedback from on what we could do to incentivize beyond that 30 years, and what would be a good cost-effective way of doing that, you know, I mean, I think if we start giving people 2% per year beyond that 30 years, or even if we just did 1% beyond that, you know, we go, you know, we're already down 650,000 bucks this year for our pension, you know, I don't know if we're going to keep increasing that, and if we can afford to keep increasing it or not, but maybe insurance is a way we could, we could offset some of that. I mean, you know, look, we got people who have jobs here who are risking their lives.
Yes.
And it would just feel kind of, it'd feel kind of crappy for somebody to not be able to have taken account, you know, taken that into account, their, their entire pension that they've earned over a lot of years of service, particularly if they get killed in the line of duty. So I'm just trying to figure out something, and I don't want everybody to leave as soon as they get their due.
Well, maybe in the line of duty is a whole other story, because there's a large federal benefit for that, very much. So that's in addition to anything that the city offers, and so when you talk about in the line of duty, then there's other enhancements that come along for that.
Maybe a good first step would be to outline exactly what these things look like as they currently are.
Right, yeah.
The 50%, the 60%, the 30, and the 150, and 160, that gets a little confusing, I think I understand it, but I mean, for our benefit, all of us, maybe outline some of that.
We may want to sit down, I do retirement education with our employees, one-on-one all the time, and so we may want to sit down as a group and kind of go through what a retirement education looks like on the defined benefit plan.
That'd be awesome.
And we can do, and we could talk about that, because if there's lots...
That'd be good for us.
Yeah, it really is. So there's lots of good questions, and we talk about a lot of scenarios, and you know, it's good for the employees, definitely would be good for the company.
Yeah, some case studies, you know, if this employee, then that, and that we really, frankly, I mean, look, I don't mind saying in front of a bunch of employees, but, you know, we hear these little snippets from this employee, and we hear a little snippet from that employee, the federal benefit for somebody getting killed or hurt in the line of duty, never even heard of that.
It's big.
You know, we, we get, you know, so we get these little pieces.
Could you, I talked with, I don't think he's here, but talked with Gerald, with GIS, and he was talking about, you know, even with the council members, to have like a little workshop to show them how the GIS works, and how when you've got someone that calls you about the issue, all the things that we can do, but it, that may be tied into something like this, really take us through a workshop on different options.
I think it would be good for us to sit together and, and have a little, at the conference room, to sit at a table and go through like what I would with an employee, and I will tell you that oftentimes when the employees come to me, they come to me with misinformation, so that you might be hearing some of the same misinformation that I sit with them, and then when we're finished, like, oh, I thought it was something different, you know, and so, and I'm glad that we had this meeting, and now I'll go talk to my financial advisor. And so I think that would be a good meeting for us to have.
And you got to remember, you got two groups of employees, you got one group of employees who are underneath the defined benefit plan, and one underneath the defined contribution plan, so you got to take all that in consideration, look at the big picture going forward. And I think I heard today, I heard, heard two things, one was, we want to help the police and fire retire earlier, and then I heard, then I heard that you wanted to...
Stay.
And you want to stay longer, I've heard, I've heard both that today, and I, so I was kind of, now we got two different concepts of...
Well, I think what you're hearing, you know, in a perfect world, in a perfect world, I think we would love to be able to, to reward employees for, for working, you know, 25, 20, depending upon, especially with firefighters and police officers with this strenuous work, but at the same time, realistically, knowing what we went through eight years ago when we made our, our change, what that GASB number is, that we would have to show to accrue that number, I think it would be astronomical on what the number would be, and then if we did say, we would love to be able to do an early retirement for public safety employees, what would that do to the rest of the organization? You know, could we realistically fill, you know, 100 police officers at one time, or whatever that number is? So, you know, it's probably, here's how much it would cost, here's how you would implement it, and it would, you know, coming up with how long it would take us, and even if it's practical. Because the other part too is, when you talk about public safety, well, if you've got someone who has another strenuous job, that they may be, you know, someone that's in the water and sewer department that's out installing lines, okay, do we, do we, you really just can't say it's because of police and fire, you really have to look at a lot of different job descriptions, so.
And it'll be interesting when we do sit down, historically, if you look at even the last 10 years, the amount of retirees, and then where we're at now, I mean, we're almost at a half a million dollar distribution, annuity distributions a month right now. And so, but if you look at where we were just a short while ago, that number's growing very quickly, and so we, that's part of what we'll talk about if we sit down and talk, so.
And the good news for everybody is, you're going to live longer, the bad news for those of us breaking out of the budget is, everybody's going to live longer.
Everybody's going to live longer.
Well, look, you did hear both sides of that, okay? I mean, and that, that's, that's the way this coun, you know, that's the way councils work. But we're trying to figure out though, I mean, look, I think it'd be worth it, what Shane asked for, but yet we'd like to see what are the numbers if we were to decrease that, and, and for my purposes, even though that's not something that I think is a wise thing to do, from a perspective of not being able to fill those positions and having depleted workforce and all those things, I still would like to see the numbers, and I think it might be helpful for our employees to see those numbers too, to at least for us to be able to say, look, I mean, I get it, but we can't afford $5 million, you know, hitting our budget, or whatever the number is, you know, I mean, that it might be a little bit, we've actually got the data to look at and make a decision, if some people think we can afford $5 million, or whatever it is, and...
And maybe too, some type of hybrid system where a one-time buyout for certain age people could be an option as well, or we should talk about doing that, rather than open that link, in that box up for everybody, do it for a certain age, so.
And we've done that with, with high labor positions in the past.
That's happened a whole lot. Thank you.
We can, we can look at a couple of things that were brought up for future workshops. I'll tell, the future workshops come up over the next few months will be focused heavily on budget, so we'll, we'll try and get these fit in there, but that's, that's where we're going to be looking.
Could we, we need to have, we need to have more of a, a separate workshop, you know, a strategic discussion workshop, separate from these two, you know, these second Wednesday workshops, for my part, I mean...
Yeah, we can, we can, we'll try and coordinate schedules, yeah.
I think what may be good is that before we, we start our budget, is if you can get us together, I think it would take an hour to go over retirement, and then at the same time, it would be good to sit us down and go over upcoming healthcare or the insurance plan, so we can really talk about any, any insurance changes overall, and then retirement, because those all tie in, and we can understand this is what, what we've got for the upcoming budget.
We, we'll try. I think, what, correct me if I'm wrong, Pam, you can yell out, I think our information on our healthcare comes in pretty late in our, by disciple, and that's, that's our biggest problem going over healthcare costs, we don't get it, so...
It does, because we're on a calendar year for benefits, but we have to project it now, so we have a lot of information for this year, but we will have, we'll get some projections to get, they'll just be early, it's a gap, and then have to come back, we have a couple, you know, at least another month, so we'll be, we'll give us some static numbers if we can, as possible.
So it's hard to get, get those numbers out too early.
All right, thank you.
Couple things.
Yeah, we have a beer permit in front of you, just tries everything in order with a beer permit?
It is, they, they still need to finish their codes inspections, so.
Codes inspection, yes.
I don't even drink, and I'll take a permit too.
The police, that's...
Yes, yes.
Pass those out, that's other business too.
All right, can I get a motion for the beer permit? All those in favor?
Let's say one, is that all we have?
That's all we have.
Okay, what I passed out for you, that's the take with you more or less, that's, we have a proposal to continue our study on development impact fees from Tischler, Tischler Vice, it's a firm that's worked nationally on, specifically on these kind of issues, they can do this pretty efficiently, they've worked in Tennessee, so they know what our laws are and what's required here to do this study, we'll put this on the agenda for voting purposes next, next week, but I wanted to give you the proposal, so you can take a look at it early, rather than later.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other business?
I think we need a rule that says for every two hours, we need the time, we should have a 10-minute break.
What are we starting in? We haven't hit two hours yet.
We haven't.
We have hit two hours?
No, not yet.
All right. Any other business? We stand adjourned. We don't need this.
No, we'll do it Thursday, you can vote on that Thursday.
I have something to use.
Because you haven't seen it, you can vote on it if you want to.
Real quick.
Hey, Laurie. Just a minute.
Yeah, so just, I'm just going to make a motion, and we go ahead and approve the impact fee study proposal, and go ahead and get them, get in Tischler Vice.
So can I ask one question?
Sure.
I know we were talking Reagan Smith about doing this study.
They, what they did is, is a survey, they just surveyed around, around the communities, but they don't have the, the depth of knowledge that, and can't do it quickly as, as this one. I made a motion.
Second. Motion second, all those in favor? All right, opposed? All right, motion passes, we'll now stand adjourned.
Thank you.